Right, good evening and welcome everyone to the town council meeting 1st of March. And our first item is a presentation by Mike Hinton of Citizens Advice Swale. I have to say, Mike, you've given us a very clear, well, written statement of all what you're doing. It looks absolutely brilliant. So I don't know if you just want people to ask questions. If we've all read this, I'm sure, all the councillors, and it certainly is very informative and looks very exciting actually. So would you like to take questions?
For the sake of the record, I should say it's Mark rather than Mike, of course.
Mark, thank you, Mark. My eyes aren't very good. Mark.
Just in case there's any confusion. The only thing that I specifically wanted to draw attention to, to the members present, is that we went into lockdown, obviously, the first time on the 23rd of March last year. And I have lost count of the number of times since then that we have been telling ourselves, oh, by the summer, we'll be back in the office, by autumn, by Christmas, we'll be back, so on and so on. And I appreciate that the circumstances are far from ideal. I appreciate that if anybody turns up at 43 Stone Street, the lights are out and there are signs on the door telling people that we're not currently in the premises, but we are still open as an organisation. And we never closed, we moved all of our services from the face-to-face work that we were doing over to online telephone services on the 24th of March last year and have been there ever since. So we are accessible. It's not the best arrangement and we're aware of the fact that there are members of the community, vulnerable people who don't have access to a computer or not comfortable with talking to people on the phone. Very much the circumstance that we've been dealt unfortunately. It is quite remarkable, there is a certain sort of if you build it, they will come kind of thing going on in that any time you're in the office to do something, to pick some post up or something like that, somebody will materialise at the door, almost if they can see the light from the pathway outside, they will turn up with a question. And as I say, we've made very clear that all the signs and everything are regularly updated and so on. But yes, just in case there is any kind of feeling that we're not supporting the community, as it says in the report, in the last coming up to 12 months, we've supported 901 people in the Favisham area since that time. And although that is lower than it would have normally been, the reason why it's been lower is because people will just rock up on the doorstep to ask a question. How do I do so and so? Where do I find such and such? Am I doing this right? And we describe them as quick contacts and they get all the information and they go away. If you're going to go through the process of making a telephone call or an online referral, it tends to be more complicated. So what we've seen is the more complicated cases, particularly cases that have been thrown up as a result of Covid. So we've had a far higher number of benefits-based queries, we've had a higher number of employment queries. We are seeing an increase in the number unfortunately of family and relationship-based queries. And we do what we can do with people over the phone and online. Thinking forward, and I've had my job, I did it last Friday, so I'm assuming that we are moving towards these halcyon days. We are not in a position right now to move anything back into Stone Street, even if we wanted to. It's simply not fit for purpose. And when we started having a look at what we needed to do to make it Covid secure, we just, with the trustee board as well, came to the conclusion that rather than putting a load of temporary things in place, now would be an ideal opportunity to make a full-on revamp of the premises. And so that's what we are aiming to do. We've had quotes from various local builders, we're in the process of drawing up a contract plan and a schedule to start the work as soon as possible, hopefully by the end of this month. And we're going to completely revamp the working area downstairs. We're creating a smaller working area for staff and volunteers because some of them will continue to work remotely. But creating a different environment for clients coming in into the public area downstairs. We're improving the lighting, we're improving the ventilation. We're improving as best we can, given the confines of the space, we've got the disabled access up to premises. Making it fit for another 10 years. We've just negotiated a new nine-year lease with the landlord. And it's a significant financial investment. I've just secured £10,000 from the Lotteries Awards Royal Fund, but the total cost of the work is going to be far more than double that. So it does, I hope, you know, councillors will recognise the fact that we are strongly committed to maintaining a physical presence in Favisham when it's safe to do so. And we'll be operating out to the Stone Street premises for the foreseeable future. And that's really the summary of where things at that you haven't got from the report and the table of statistics. So I'm hoping to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I don't know if anyone has. councillor Barker.
Councillor Barker's on mute.
On mute, you're on mute.
I've got three questions, thank you, Mark. Thank you, madam mayor. And I ought to say, there's nothing kind of Machiavellian behind any of these questions, Mark. It's they're genuine questions of interest. I am fully supportive of Citizens Advice and its role in the town. To what extent are local calls redirected to local agents? So I know that a lot of the volunteers will have been where they have wanted to, will have been moved towards phone-based roles. But to what extent are national, you know, because it's a national banking system, isn't it? To what extent are local people directed to local agents or volunteers?
Okay, we actually operate two kind of parallel services at the moment. We have received some funding from the National Office, from BIS, to support our contribution to the national service because that was where the funding was targeted. So local offices could bid for funding and they pick up calls from wherever. But the way the advice line system operates is if you ring in to advice line, you're asked to give a local dial code. So you say, I want 795, and it will direct you to the nearest advisor in that zone. So logically, if somebody's ringing from Favisham and they give a Favisham number, it will be picked up by somebody in at least Favisham or Sitingborough. So if they don't then pick up, it goes to the next wider area, which in our case is the East Kent network. And then if that doesn't pick up, it goes to the national network. So the odds are fairly high that you will get, if it's a day when we're manning the phones, which is generally speaking Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, you'll get a local advisor.
Great, thank you. My next question is, to what extent has your cost base changed through the Covid period?
It's gone up in some areas, it's gone down in others. We are still having to honour the rent payments that we're making in the Favisham premises and in Swale House. Fortunately, Sheffield Gateway, Kent County Council have put a stay on the rent payments for the premises we use there. Our staff expenses are considerably lower, we don't have to feed them with biscuits and we, yeah, we've not run the heating high in Favisham over the winter because there's nobody in there. But on the other hand, we have, and again, we have received some funding for this, but we have bought quite a lot of IT. We've needed to get the whole team operating remotely. So we've had to spend out on more laptops, we have a number more mobile phones. And we're fueling various people's printers with ink and so on and so forth. So we are probably running slightly cheaper than we were, but the expenditure has actually moved.
Understood, that makes sense. And my final question, Mark, if I may. I know from kind of experience, I know somebody that has volunteered for several years with Citizens Advice in Favisham. But typically, the demographic of the volunteers tends to be, you know, retired people. It's not wholly true, but it is to some extent. Has there been any attrition due to kind of Covid and the break between kind of face-to-face? And do you see yourself being able to, you know, when you are able to get back into the office to populate it with enough volunteers? Were you struggling in any way?
We have, I'm not quite sure how we've done it, but we've done remarkably
You have.
Over the last 12 months. And they have, sorry, go, say.
Hey, you've done very well with your.
Yes, and again, it's not because we specifically put efforts into recruiting people, but they tend to be of a younger demographic. And so we've now got a number of people who have never advised a person and seen them at the same time because they've not been in our premises at all. Which is really, really helpful and it gives us lots of hope for continuing sustaining service in the future. Our experienced volunteers, a number of our experienced volunteers, I have to say. We had some who struggled quite a lot making the transition from face-to-face work to telephone-based work. It is quite a different way of advising people. A number of people have kind of gone on a reserve list for when we're back to face-to-face. So they attend meetings and they're interested in what we're doing and we send a regular newsletter around and so on. But they're not active volunteers at the moment, but are gagging for the opportunity as soon as they can get back into face-to-face work. And a smallish number have decided now is the time for one reason or another to say that they can't be participating anymore. But in total, over the whole period, a number of volunteers has actually gone up. What we will have to do is when we move back into face-to-face service, is run some catch-up sessions across the whole team, just bring them back up to speed about the pros and cons and the ups and downs of advising clients face-to-face because you get out of practice. Obviously, people have never actually done it. We're very effective in doing training with telephone-based advice and all the rest of it, but actually being in a small space with an angry client or a very tearful client.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. councillor Jackson.
In anticipation, Mark, that you're going to be really busy once lockdown finishes and you can get in there, how many people do you think that you will be able to see safely and privately in a day?
Oh, that is an extraordinarily difficult. What we won't be able to do immediately, if, and I have to say this to be perfectly honest, if ever, is run a drop-in service. The first thing we will do in terms of face-to-face work will be appointments. The space that we currently occupy, there is only one room that we could see a client and that's the waiting room because the interview rooms are too small and only one of them has got ventilation. So as we stand at the minute, we could only see one person at a time and then have to manage how we did the transition from one person coming in and another one going out. When the building work is done, we'll be able to see three at a time. Realistically, through an advice session, you're probably talking about being able to see, this is very much thinking on my feet, but I would struggle to see how you could realistically do more than about 12 or 16 people in a day on that basis. It could be less than that because some of those appointments will be specialist appointments with, for example, a debt caseworker or a benefits caseworker doing form filling. Well, form filling can take two hours on its own. But what, we will bear in mind on the other side of the process, we have got to risk assess all of the staff and volunteers and make sure the systems and processes are appropriate and compliant and everybody feels safe and so on. We've got to manage the flow of traffic of people coming in and out, which is not easy when you've got a narrow alleyway going up and down to the, you can't have people congregating outside waiting and so on. So we will start very tentatively. The other possibility, and we might be able to do this sooner than actually getting the building work completed, is dependent on what's happening, you know, we've got the zillion variant doing the rounds now and all the rest of it. But depending on the information we get from government and how we can operate, we could, and we've talked about this before as a possibility, operate some of our appointment-based services in another location. So we could do something in Alexander Centre or West Favisham Community Centre or something like that, if people were happy to do that. And we've always got that in our bag as a possibility. Maybe that we end up operating mostly out of Stone Street, but also supplementing that with some outreach work in other areas as well. Particularly if the numbers are problematic, if we've got more demand than we've got space, for example.
I think that's excellent, to think about the recent west community or the Alexander Centre, I think that's a very good idea.
Obviously, there's a cost implication in that.
That's right. I think, Mark, well, I think that's all the questions, I think the 15 minutes. So thank you very much and I know we wish you well. It looks like a new venture almost really, and we totally appreciate what you're doing for this community and will support you as much as we possibly can.
We'll be coming with a cap in hand, didn't you?
Yes, thank you.
We are immensely grateful for the support that we receive from Favisham Town Council and the interest that you show in the work that we do as well. It's good to know that we're not just kind of doing this in a vacuum and that the local elected officials and community agencies are on board with the work that we're doing. That's really good to hear. So thank you.
We certainly know you're doing lots of good work, so thank you. Thank you. Now, I think we will move on. Presentation by Daniel Perchis for the Favisham neighbourhood plan. The breakthrough communications you are, aren't you? Yes, I've got you there, Daniel. Thank you. We'll hand over to you.
Thank you very much and good evening, everybody. Okay, so I'm just going to update on the work we've been doing on behalf of the council with regard to the three surveys that we carried out over December, January and February. And what I wanted to do just very briefly is summarise some key highlights from that because it would take, well, it would take a very long time to go through the report in detail. The very final version of the report will be submitted to Adrian this week, hopefully no later than Wednesday. So at that point, I, members obviously can have access to the full report, which is 65 pages long. And the, as well as, we'll also send in the full data tables that encapsulate all the reports. So I just wanted to summarise some of the key aspects as we currently stand and talk through so that when you look at the report later in the week or thereafter, you can see the approach that we were asked to take and give you a sense of that. So please just bear with me while I share my screen. Excuse me. And so the report you'll have access to, as I say, is very extensive in terms of detail, but I'll just summarise some key points. Because it's so long, to make it easier to navigate, there is, I don't know how well you'd be able to see on my screen. I'm not expecting anyone to read it in detail, but there is effectively quite a detailed navigation. So you can look up and drill down very quickly and easily into questions and then the themes that emerged in the responses to those questions, if that makes sense. So in summary, we carried out three surveys, a main resident survey, as you know, which was delivered by Royal Mail in paper format as well as in a digital format. And then we were also asked to carry out a business survey and a youth survey. Both of those were digital only. The business survey was also, correct if I'm wrong, sent out via the council to businesses for whom the council had contact details and also through a local business support organisation to their member businesses as well. And we did heavy publicity on social media and I believe a couple of local schools encouraged people to take part. All the surveys were anonymous, except with the business survey. We asked people to optionally provide their name and a contact email address, which the council can then use to keep in touch with and build its support for local businesses. And in terms of the main resident survey, so that was where the bulk of our work has focused, there were 527 responses in total. And we've, we've, you'll have all seen the survey, of course. The survey had a very significant number of open answer questions, by which we mean responses that people could write in whatever they liked, in as much length as they like. And what I thought was really positive is both on the digital version of the survey but also on the printed survey, people made lots of really constructive comments and gave quite lots of detail. There were over 80,000 words. In fact, it's fairly significantly higher than that. I'll include it in the executive summary when the report is submitted. But well over 80,000 words of information and views and ideas provided across those two parts of the resident survey. We've digitised all of that information. So the big pile of printed surveys, we've typed all up so that the council and its, the organisations it works with on its neighbourhood plan can do future drill-down analysis to both sets of surveys without having to trawl through lots and lots of paper copies of the survey. Although the council will also have back the paper copies. In terms of, just to summarise the business survey and the youth survey, then I'll just talk through a couple of overarching themes that emerged. Excuse me. So the business survey generated 34 responses. But actually, if we think about that as a percentage of businesses specifically within Favisham, that actually gave a reasonable snapshot of views of local businesses. And the youth survey had 117 responses overall. In terms of some overarching key themes, so I'm just going to show on screen an example of how we were asked to produce this, just to give you an idea. So for each, sorry, I should have actually checked right at the beginning. Can I just check if everyone can see my screen? Okay, I should have actually. Always good to ask on a Zoom meeting, isn't it? Sorry. So the way we were asked to approach this, excuse me, is for each question in the survey, we've listed the questions. So the first question was an open question. What kind of place would you like Favisham to become, looking ahead forward 10 years? We then explained that the response was an open answer. How many people actually chose across both print and digital to respond to that question? We put in just for, I guess, just purely for visual purposes, to help get an immediate snapshot sense of some of the repeating phrases that appeared in the survey. So as a word cloud, but then immediately underneath what we, we were asked to then draw out key themes. So we've gone through all the responses, both to the print and the digital surveys, and drawn out repeating phrases and ideas that align to certain themes. So for example, and I'll just give this one as an example. So the question, looking ahead, what kind of place would you like Favisham to become? There were clearly lots of answers and as I've said, you'll be able to drill down into those in as much depth as you like. But there were a number of themes that emerged, two core themes. And we've drawn out theme one as, we want to preserve a market town that respects its historical heritage and retains its character and unique status. How many people aligned to that theme based on the phrases and the sentences they gave us? And then we've given verbatim examples of people's quotes. So for example, the first quote we've drawn out is, and again, we haven't edited these. We would like it to remain a unique quirky market town with independent shops and have people who care about the town. And so that's the approach we've taken as requested. And we've drawn out, so we've drawn out multiple themes where relevant. And then we've done that for each question. Clearly, some questions like this. Question number two are closed questions, so it's a simple either binary yes-no decision or a scale set of responses. And we've worked that through all the way through the survey. And just to draw out a couple of highlights for you, if I may, then I'll stop talking and answer any questions. Perhaps colleagues will be unsurprised to hear that a lot of people want to see the preservation of the town as a market town, and lots of phrases around that were used. And a lot of people talked about the town having a unique identity, a unique heritage, and particularly a passion for different parts of the town. It did draw out, quite interestingly, if I'll just scroll down slightly, a lack of, a perceived lack of provision for community spaces. So in our question here, do you think there is enough provision? You can see that there is a slight majority for no. And then we started to tease that, okay, well, what's missing? And again, we've drawn out key themes for that. I'm not proposing to go in depth in all the questions just because of time, but you'll get a sense of the approach taken. A couple of questions I thought had really interesting responses. When we asked the question about youth facilities, we broke this into two categories. The first question specifically was thinking about the provision for 0-8-year-olds. Where you can see there's a slight majority for yes, there is adequate provision overall. When we asked, okay, well, what do you think about provision for 9-16-year-olds? There was a significantly different answer and I just thought that was really interesting. We also asked those questions in the youth survey and they broadly match actually as well. So young people giving a similar view to what people who have filled out the main resident survey think. We also, well, you'll have seen the questions, I won't go through them all because of time, but you'll be able for any given question, be able to drill down and get quite a lot of detail for each one. And as I said, we'll also provide access to the data tables as well. The last thing just to, I just wanted to mention very briefly was in relation to green spaces and parks and satisfaction with those. Broadly, people do feel, sorry, are satisfied with the current provision. There were positive suggestions for how things could be improved and preserved, but I thought that was very positive, with over 50% saying satisfied and a further 8.5 saying very satisfied overall. Sorry, bear with me, apologies. And also just linked to that, sorry, when we asked people, okay, well, which local green spaces are important to you? I don't know how well colleagues can see the screen, I'll just zoom in ever so slightly so that's clearer. But rec or recreation ground, the rec will refer to by far the most times and others were listed in there as well as being the most important to residents. But there were lots of helpful responses. I could, well, given time, I'll pause there if I may and happily, madam mayor, take questions. But as I say, we'll have this, we'll have the very final version to submit through to Adrian by midweek and then we can, that can obviously then be disseminated further. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Do we have any questions?
No, sorry.
Councillor Barker, yes.
You can see me on the screen. I've kind of seen a lot of the results and it's not a question really. It would be nice when all the councillors have a chance to review and reflect on the survey in view of the fact we've got a couple of meetings coming up on the local plan around question 13, which is specifically around the response of the community to, you know, the probably impactful growth we're likely to see. So just ask councillors to read that. And the other is just to thank Daniel at Breakthrough and Adrian actually from, you know, from our council team for the, you know, extremely hard effort they put into both publicising and getting responses and then collating as we did with our exhibitions. I think it's a really good piece of work and they've both done a fantastic job. So just to thank them for that, really.
Absolutely brilliant. Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Daniel. I personally, there was nothing there that I quickly saw that surprised me. there was nothing there that I quickly saw that surprised me. I've always known this community is very caring with a great community spirit. And so, and, and yes, what you were saying from the youth and very, I, I would have probably got most of that right. But it'd be really interesting to see the full survey and the outcome. So thank you very much. I think that will happen later this week and we'll all be really interested to see it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me along. Bye bye.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Now we could move on to public questions. Have we any questions from the public? Councillor Jackson.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've got a question from a member of the public regarding the mask that's been situated in the car park. This is from a resident in Bank Street who says it's very large, not at all happy about it, and she would like assurance that it's only going to be there for the eighteen months. And where will it go afterwards? Thank you. We could answer that.
Oh, wow. Does anyone, can I ask the councillors, does anyone have an answer to that question? Or do we need to go and research that? Councillor Owen.
So the, the, the short answer is I don't have, have an answer to it. And actually, I, I, it was as big a surprise for, if I'm sure it was for anybody. I can't recall once this council being consulted or asked about it. And I'm completely flabbergasted and shocked by, by the fact that you can put something like that up without planning permission. I don't know the legalities of it and ins and outs of it, but it's a huge surprise. So I certainly would hope it's, it's there no longer. It's absolutely necessary.
Quite. And councillor Hook?
I agree with what my colleague councillor said. It was a great shock to see it go up there. And Swell Council was the planning authority of kindly put into the public domain an explanation, which is that the legislation lets telecoms companies throw up masts wherever they like, apparently, in, in absence of a suitable site. I'm very curious to find out what a suitable site is. Evidently, the multi-save shop was the site and this is a replacement of it. Maybe academic, maybe, you know, in what respect the multi-save site isn't available now, but more importantly, looking to the future, what kind of site do they want? And I wonder actually if the town clerk on our behalf could write to EE and ask them about this issue and this mask, and if the eighteen months can be curtailed and it be moved on more quickly, I think that'd be very welcome to the whole community. But if they could tell us some more about what kind of site they need, I'm sure Swell Council's officers are working on it very hard. But within this council, the members of the council, our staff, and members of the public that we have good communications with, if there is a good site, we're bound to know where it is and perhaps we can help smooth the path for a good site to be found where people can get a good telephone signal, but without it being such a nice store as it is in the middle of the car park.
Yes, the car park is temporary, so we need to find something more permanent, don't we? So are there any other questions? No, we will move on to the agenda. Apologies.
I have, I have no apologies because I think everybody's here.
Very good. And declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests, members who have an interest to declare on items on the agenda must declare the existence and nature of it at the start of the meeting and act in accordance with the council's Code of Conduct, S twenty seven Localism Act two thousand and eleven. Can't see everyone, but no one has their hand up?
Councillor Barker has his hand up.
Councillor Barker.
I'm not sure whether I need to declare an interest or not, but there's an item on the municipal charities later for which I'm the trustee, so.
Thank you. I'm not sure you need to either. Town clerk, would councillor Barker need to declare an interest?
Just a non-pecuniary, that's fine.
Non-pecuniary, thank you. Item three, previous minutes and matters to report. Has anyone, any comments on the minutes? Could I propose we accept the minute? Have we got a second up? Councillor Williams? Could we all vote on that? Thank you. Thank you. I think that's unanimous there. Oh, mayor's announcements. Well, you'll be very pleased to know they are very short. It was a quiet month, a very quiet month, didn't quite hibernate, but obviously all the statutory meetings, the Zoom meetings, the trustees' meetings all went ahead. And I have to say, well done to their neighbourhood plan. Adrienne and the councillors and the steering group, they had several meetings last month. It certainly has moved up a gear. I chaired as president, the Men of Kent, Kentish Men, their AGM. And I did say I will put out, and if all of us could, they are looking for new members. The ones they've got are all in their eighties and nineties, so we're looking for new members for that. And I had a virtual tour of Kent. Oh, hang on, no, HMS Kent, a virtual tour. It's so interesting and a real insight into how life at sea works with the Covid restrictions as well. It was absolutely brilliant. So I would have liked to have been on the ship, but we got a good idea of what was happening. And then Friday, this Friday, a Zoom call. I don't know if you all remember the mayor's cadet, Daniel Davis, who was who, who joined the RAF and he completed his training and we all zoomed in to watch his passing out parade and felt very proud actually, because encouraging these young people to go into these areas, I think is crucial at this time. Friday night was the Faversham Creek Trust, again, so interesting and encouraging. Hoping there will be more progress over the next year regarding the swing bridge being installed. Obviously, the skips that are being built, really exciting, one for each ward. We'll have our race. I'm sure it's going to happen. So that was a very positive meeting. And I'm sure like me, you've noticed in the last few days, the amount of bulbs, daffodils, snowdrops that have been planted, that have come up are just amazing these last couple of days. And I think we need to thank all those volunteers. And the recreation ground even today has got beds in it. I'm not sure councillor William probably knows exactly whether it's for wilding or whether it's for a bee programme. But, and there are lots of new shrubs, I've noticed as well. So much positive is happening during these very difficult times. And I'd like to thank the community, the councillors, the council staff for all the positivity I see and I hear about. So thank you. Right, we have item five, a report from the police. Kent Police. I think we've all got a copy of their report. Are there any questions anyone would like to ask? And councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I really welcome this report and I'm looking forward to getting regular updates from this, this new officer. The information she's giving is very useful. At least we have a good point of contact now. I have already emailed her because I wanted to know some more information about what they were doing to educate and discourage people from recklessly cycling through the town centre, but particularly through alleyways. I think it's a bit of an education issue there. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. It's also good to see that they are tackling the issue of quad bikes. And dirt bikes being ridden inappropriately around the town and electric scooters. So it's good. We've got that new officer and looking forward to working with her. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other comments? Any other questions?
Just to comment, I think it's the first time in my four years or so in the council that I've seen a report like this. And it's excellent to get it. It's really helpful and I, I hope it's the first of many and that we can communicate with the officer who's providing on a regular basis to, to work together to stop these things happening.
Thank you. Councillor Owen, did you want to come in?
Yeah, again, just to comment, I think it's a really positive move. You know, certainly those of us on, on the youth working group and probably all of us are aware that the police, you know, in addition to their apprehending and preventing criminal activity, you know, they do a lot of positive work in the town with youth. And I think it's, it's good if, you know, we start seeing that reported on because they're doing a great job and I really welcome the communication.
Thank you. And we could pass that on. I'm sure the town clerk will pass that on. It's, as you say, it's communication that we're seeing what they've been doing, whereas we wouldn't have been aware fully. So it's great that we, yeah, understand.
Madam Mayor, sorry, Madam Mayor, councillor Perkin has her hand as well.
I can't see her. Thank you. Councillor Perkin.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna kind of echo what my colleagues have said. I think that I've had a number of kind of really productive conversations with the PCSO and she's been really helpful in getting back to me when I've asked questions. So I just wanted to kind of feedback for thanks and look forward to working with her in the future. I think she's going to be a really positive addition to the town. So that's all I've got to say.
Another positive. That's really good. Thank you. No other questions. Shall we move on to Twenties Plenty? Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has everyone seen the minutes?
Yes, yes, we've got them. Yes, we did.
I don't have anything particular to add on there, but I am open to take questions from councillors if need be.
Anyone have any question? Councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Thomas, I note in the matters for report mentions the various camera data. You know, when the group like to receive that data and the reports on it.
It should be shortly, councillor Martin. I will ask again and we'll probably present it at the next Twenties Plenty Committee, which I believe is on the first, first of April. So you'll be able to see the results then. But a good point, good question. Thank you.
Any others? Can we accept those?
I'll propose to accept them. I just need a second there.
I will second. And can we all vote on that? Thank you. Item seven, policy and finance.
Thank you. I'm going to start just before I, I, I talk to a couple of areas in the policy and finance minutes, just an update from the meeting before last, actually. Where councillor Hookers, the Kent County councillor for, for Faversham, proposed to investigate whether he could secure part of his members' budget to conduct some research primarily into, you know, what can be done by, by the community to address you know, antisocial and, and other behaviours that, that, that's a crime. I'm really glad to, glad to note that this morning I was sent an email by Kent County Council saying that we've secured that funding. So I'd like to thank councillor Hook for putting that forward and hopefully in the May policy and finance meeting, we can, we can discuss just how we undertake that and how we commission that work. But you know, along with the, with the crime figures we've had today from, from the police report, it's really good to see that we're kind of making some really strong.
Some progress, definitely. Good progress.
The, the rest of the policy and finance minutes, I think there are one really interesting point to, to, to talk through, which is the Heritage Working Group, which now reports into policy and finance. We've made significant strides forward in getting funding now for the Magna Carta exhibition. But, but also within that timeframe, we've, we've had the pandemic, pandemic, which has changed the way in which, in which exhibitions can be conducted. So it's no longer de rigueur to have lots of touchscreen where you can hand off germs and spoons. But, but we are very lucky in Faversham to have an extremely strong community of, of very experienced people, including a professor of tourism. And we are, we've set up, we've resolved to set up an advisory board to look at how we can best present that exhibition in more innovative ways with apps and so on, which I think is, which is really interesting. So it's good to see that. And we also resolved in the committee to, to set up a, a, a working group around the possibility of creating a, a working group for the Faversham Society to move into part of the downstairs of, of, of Twelve Marketplace. So that was a recommendation that we need to, need to sort of take forward and vote. But it's, again, it's quite an innovative idea, really. It's that the Faversham Society have a small kind of bureau within the downstairs of Twelve Marketplace. It allows Twelve Marketplace to look utilised. It could also provide opportunity for the same knowledgeable people around, you know, Faversham itself to provide a focal point for the town, but also be able to man a Magna Carta exhibition when it becomes, becomes live. So we positively recommended that in the policy and finance committee and I'd like to propose we accept that recommendation. If there are any comments or questions, happy to take them. We'll have the debate. We'll take a second to, to take it forward.
I will second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Martin, you were.
Yeah, if I may just point out, it's the, it's not to move the whole of the Faversham Society.
No.
The visiting maintenance centre. And it's based on the responses to the exhibitions that were held pre-Covid and the number of people that were actually calling in to exhibitions run by the Faversham Society, asked for information quickly. They didn't realise whether tourism information is important. It just made more sense. So it's just a recommendation to have a working group and discuss with them further how much space it would take and things like that. And obviously their details will come back to us.
Thank you. Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to, to ask councillor Martin. Would he expect to be able to have any information to give to the town council in April or what sort of timetable of feedback from this working group?
I think this would be, I think we'd be looking to feed back to town council probably in May. It would be, I think this is one of those where it's not going to be a rapid solution. Because the, obviously the Faversham Society have to discuss exact requirements with, with what they've got at the moment and what they're going to do with the space that the V I C currently occupies. And also to their volunteers to see how many would be willing to effectively move into this. So there's, there will be time to, to discuss and I don't want to put too quick a timescale on it, but I would hope that we could get this sorted out so that I would predict a move would probably not come until the, over the winter, you know, because we've got, there's quite a lot to discuss, such as space requirements, even such things as how we manage that space and adapt the space in front so that it can accommodate. So I wouldn't expect it to be a project that will take that will materialise quickly, but I would hope to get it done before we open the Magna Carta exhibition or as we do.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions before we vote on the recommendation? In which case.
Can we all vote?
Let me have a second. Can we vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you. That all sounds.
Sorry, I've got a couple, a couple more.
Sorry, I've got a couple, a couple more things. Just, there was a further recommendation, so from the uh Favisham District and County Lottery Group.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there was a question about whether 10% of the discretionary funding should come forward back into the town council and to allocate to good causes. Um, or whether the good causes themselves should directly receive that funding. I'm just gonna ask to make sure councillor um Saunders, have I got that correct? That was the, that's the recommendation, isn't it? That was the question.
Yes, sorry, councillor Barker. Um, yeah, the record, the, the recommendation was that uh the additional 10% stay with the good, uh, good causes rather than coming to the central fund. Yeah.
I would definitely.
So it was, it was just felt that it, it would incentivise those good causes to actually promote the, the lottery. And, you know, in line with the original objectives for this, which is to kind of ensure that good causes and public assets were protected in um post-COVID times, when there's probably likely to be some, you know, financial scarcity and so on, that, that it should sit with them. So um, I'm happy to propose that we accept that recommendation. Do we have a second there?
Yes.
Next councillor Reynolds, do we have any questions before we move to vote? Councillor Ben Martin.
Uh, thanks councillor Barker. It, it's just a quick one. It's what impact does that have uh in terms of the central pot? I'm just thinking some individuals may purchase tickets on the central pot rather than any of the individual charities that have signed up. And how will that be allocated? Um, or is that not yet been decided or discussed?
Councillor.
I don't want to answer that question.
Yeah.
Um, it, it was discussed at the working group. Um, but we decided to give ourselves, I think I'm right in saying, we decided to give ourselves a bit of time to work through because we, we will need, we will need criteria for whom it goes to. We'll need a process which probably could, should involve some independent involvement. And we also need to build up a bit of a fund before we start allocating it. So we felt there was time to do all of those things, but we do need to, to come back to it and, and set some criteria and, and a process.
Any other further questions before we vote? No, in which case can we?
Happy with that.
Can we vote on that, please?
Yeah.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. The town clerk has kindly reminded me that we have um recommended to take forward a small working group um around the Favisham Society, potentially taking a small amount of, of area to, to marketplace. But haven't had any names to take, to, to do, you know, to take on that working group. Um, I'm happy to.
I'm happy.
On that working group. Councillor Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councillor Martin, councillor Trevor Martin, that's three, that's probably enough to, to get going. Great. Thank you, town clerk. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. That all sounds really positive and things are moving forward, which is absolutely brilliant. After this awful time that we've had with COVID, so lots of positive happening. And item eight is Favisham Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group. Councillor Owen.
Point of order, madam mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, there was no, um, there was no recommendation to accept the four minutes.
So that's my fault. Sorry, I proposed to accept the four minutes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Yes, can, yeah, we'll all vote. Thank you. So, yes, we're in Favisham Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group councillor Owen.
Thank you, madam mayor. So the Favisham Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group met on Monday, the fifteenth. Um, and I think perhaps one of the biggest things we talked in that meeting was the survey. So thank you to um, to Chris and also thank, thank you to Adrian for, for making those three surveys happen. It's been a huge amount of work, um, but an extremely important piece of work, given that uh we've, we've really been curtailed significantly in terms of community engagement over COVID. So I think that, that, that's made a real difference um to the work that we've been doing. So thank you for that. Um, just, just a very, one of the we discussed was timelines for the neighbourhood plan. Um, again, councillor Barker has developed some detailed timelines, but just, just so, so you're aware of it off the top of your head. Um, we expect to have a draft plan finalised somewhere between April and June of this year. Um, we are planning to have our uh Regulation fourteen consultation around September, October of this year and autumn of this year, with a view to having a referendum around March of uh twenty twenty-two. So, so we're on track essentially for March this time uh next year in terms of referendum, which remains ambitious, but, but, but doable. Um, we have also, I think, we, we've set a series of workshops. Um, we're meeting to discuss a design code. We met to discuss local green spaces last week. Um, and on the seventeenth of March, which is St Patrick's Day, we're meeting to discuss a site assessment. And I, I touched on uh our call for sites and the sites that came forward last time. So I can report back on that at the next meeting. Um, this evening I've sent everyone a copy of our draft design code. Your feedback is, is most welcome. Um, it's, it's a relatively advanced draft. We had it, we had a couple of back and forths with it. When you read it, you'll note there's still a few errors in it, as, as there inevitably are with these things, but please take a look at it and give it your feedback. It's, it's a hundred page document, but it, it's, it's got lots of pictures in it. So it's actually quite a pleasant read. Um, and the, the recommendation that, that came forward uh for town council was with respect to the request uh that came from Swellborough Council to put forward an expression of interest to participate in the pilot study for a, the national design codes. Um, I think that was dealt with via email because essentially the deadline came uh from Swell. I had to go back on the twentieth of February, and my understanding is the recommendation of the neighbourhood planning group went forward to Swell rather than the recommendation from Favisham Town Council. Um, I don't know if there's any questions on that. Councillor Saunders.
Yeah, I, 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 I've not got criticisms of the, of the process or uh the fact that, uh, you know, you, you agreed it and, and um carried forward as you, as you felt best. It, it did strike me though that the request from um Swellborough Council was really to support um their, their application. And I wasn't, it didn't seem clear to me that there were any great work um implications for, for the town council. But have I got, did I have that wrong?
So, so their, their request was to provide an indication that we were partners in the process to support their uh expression of interest. So essentially, the ideas they were expressing interest in doing that themselves. And in, and they wished to indicate that we were going to be partners in that process with them. So there was no requirement um in terms of work for the expression of interest. However, it did imply and does imply that we would work with them on the delivery of that design code. We, we had uh an opportunity. So the official request came to us on the fifteenth um of February and we had the feedback by the twentieth of February. We did have an opportunity to discuss it um informally with Jill Pete, um planning officer at Swell uh the previous Friday. Um, and she indicated that, that, that the ideas it would be a collaborative process. I think the um, our unwillingness to participate in the call um expression of interest doesn't preclude us doing anything in the future. But I think what we felt was that, that given we had just um expended a significant uh amount of public funds developing a design code, which I've sent to you this evening, that actually to, to, to ignore that and, and go and design secondary site, design code probably wouldn't be uh the best perception in terms of, of how we're spending public money. So that, that was, there were a number of other reasons why we didn't, but, and of course, it doesn't mean they can't do a design code. Um, councillor Barker.
Yes, councillor Barker.
Councillor Martin was slightly before me. Councillor Martin.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Again, I'm not going to make any criticism. I think uh with that information you've given, the, the neighbourhood plan steering group clearly made a a decision based on the information that it had before it. Um, if I'm completely honest, I think it shows again the difficulties placed on both district and parish councils by central government in its insistence on giving things very short time scales to get things done. Um, I've experienced it with my other hat on in terms of applications for homelessness funding and, and housing funding and whatnot, where you're given five or six days to put an application together, or you're not getting any money. And I think it looks like this is another one of those situations where the government have said, oh, expressions of interest, please. You've got fourteen days to do it. Um, so fair play to you guys. It's just one of those things.
And they're all volunteers. Councillor Barker.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to muddy the waters further still, but my, you know, one of the reasons that I, I suggested that we didn't necessarily express an interest i- in this particular round, although as, as councillor Owen said, that doesn't stop us or preclude us from, from getting engaged further down the line. Is that, you know, not only have we spent a significant amount of public money in a design code to help us with our, our, our neighbour plan. But we, I, I think genuinely we risk doing a number of things by looking at a secondary design code. Firstly, spending money twice. Um, a, a, another element is that we could produce a design code in conjunction with areas without Favisham, that, that conflicts with elements of our design code. That, that we already, as the local plan will show, you know, stand to take a significant proportion of three and a half thousand houses um within our parish that already has parts of design codes, you know, that have been put forward by, by those developers. I, I, I genuinely worry about too much input and therefore, you know, too much lateral thinking by developers if, if we're not precise. And I think by developing our own design code, which is e- extremely, you know, detailed, and I urge all the councillors to, to look at the document that um councillor Owen's put a lot of time and effort into, working on creating. And, and that we stand behind that rather than confusing, you know, several iterations of different documents by different, different groups.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Owen, do we need to come back to you?
Yeah, just, just very briefly, I think, um, you know, councillor Martin's uh uh comments, I think are absolutely true. Um, I don't, I don't in any way blame Swellborough Council. I think they're absolutely trying to do the right thing. This is literally something, the, the government have published a, a, a national model design code. They've decided that it'd be good to pilot it and they've just written to all um, all, all, all borough councils as if they'd like to participate. So it's not something that, that Swellborough Council could have planned for. Um, and actually, it's a good idea, but it just doesn't work in our circumstances for the reasons described. Um, if there's no other questions, I'd like to propose we accept the minutes of the neighbourhood plans steering group.
Yeah. Councillor Thomas, are you seconding?
Okay.
Yes.
Second, madam mayor.
Second, thank you. And sorry, and can we all vote then? Thank you, councillor Barker down there. Thank you. Well done. It's, well, I know you've been working extremely hard on that, extremely hard. And youth. Now, I'm not sure if councillor Irwin wishes to say anything. Um, but certainly I'd like to. It is a very difficult area, especially at the moment. But we are trying to pull together. Uh, West Favisham are just beginning to give, hopefully this week, we'll find out what they're intending to do. And it seems that they're going to do after school youth club every night of the week. Um, Creed, he's going to tell us what he's hoping to do in the next month or two. Um, Bus seventy-two in the trailer, obviously they want to get out as soon as possible. Uh, and Dan, I saw today, he's come back with another um statement. Um, and certainly we are willing to support these people. We'd just like to pull together the programme of what's going to happen for the young people. Um, I think we decided, well, we're looking into very much, we would like something practical, tangible for these young people, maybe during this summer holiday. Even if we could only pull together one fun day for them with a mobile skate park and some, something we could do. Or if we could, one day a week, um, and take it to each corner of the town. So we're looking at possibilities here. Um, obviously for the autumn, we hope to get the youth council back on board. And we'd like to continue the youth cafe. I think the feeling is uh using number twelve. Uh, although I think um the V I C might be in one half, but it will be sectioned off. We can still use the other half. We possibly could bring Dan in with his trailer. So we're looking, we're looking at things really at the moment. We haven't got anything definite on paper, but it's very close. I think we're moving forward. And councillor Martin.
Yeah, I think it is, it is worth pointing out from the media minutes of the last meeting that we have been approached by uh the, uh, bud from K C C, Amanda Turner. Um, we do hope as a working group to meet with uh, uh, her shortly to discuss what she's asking for. However, given the county elections due, the chances are we wouldn't be able to report back until after the per di period on that.
Thank you. Yes. Anyone? Uh, councillor Thomas.
I was just going to ask, has the, the, the working group um been in contact with Ben Simon, the uh Favisham Recreation and Activities Coordinator?
Yes.
They do have a uh, a function room um at the pavilion.
Yes, that would be brilliant. Thank you. We will bring him on board. And councillor Williams, you may want to talk about, um, yes, you're engaging with the environmental outdoor activities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. Funny, I was just gonna put my hand up for that. Um, yeah, I, I, well, I'm putting a, I've put a proposal together for the Climate and Biodiversity Committee. Um, which, which in a doubt will also come through to the youth working group as well, but um essentially to formulate a youth climate panel um in Favisham, which will bring together school students who, particularly um students that are involved with green groups within the schools, but also those from different settings and other, other youth organisations. Um, really to provide a, a platform for them to discuss issues around the town, but indeed nationally and internationally, concerns around climate change. Um, it will help influence what we do as a council. It will, might hopefully lead to them getting involved with community work, such as some of the organisations in the town who um do activities and it might provide another, another different avenue for activities for young people. Um, clearly, it's not been decided yet. It's going to come, come up for discussion at the, at next week's meeting. So hopefully I can report back, well, we'll report back on that in the minutes of climate biodiversity at the next full council. But it's a positive potential. Um, another avenue for youth work.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Owen, did you want to come in on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one, one, uh, just to draw one thing to everyone's attention. Um, Dan, Dan Cochrane, he has, actually, we, we, we got an email today, I think everyone knows.
Yes.
That uh he's proposing to pull together a youth and children's network for Favisham. Uh, I know, I know Brooke has been supporting him. So thank you, Brooke. Um, for providing that support. So on the ninth of March, um, the idea is that Dan's going to try to gather together as many participants in the kind of organising and delivery of youth services in the town. I think this is a really positive step. Um, he suggested some things that that group could do. First of all, be actually mapping what the position is. Uh, one of the things, I think, shocked all of us uh on the youth working group, it's no single body seems to have a, a handle on what's available within town. So I think it's a really positive initiative.
Definitely.
And I think, you know, I'm glad we're supporting him in doing that.
Thank you. Yes. I think that's an excellent way forward. So we are looking, we are trying to move things forward and feeling quite positive again. So thank you.
Um, I think we've got councillor Jackson, madam mayor.
I think we've got councillor Jackson, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jackson, you haven't got you on screen.
I wanted to ask councillor Williams what age group he was thinking of. As we've seen from the neighbourhood plan talk earlier on. There is a certain age group which really does feel that they are neglecting.
Well, my, my proposed age group was 11 to 18. Equally. That was just a suggestion I've put within that. I mean, clearly it could be, I think younger might be a bit more difficult because well, for various reasons, but, but, and I think above 18, they tend to have more options to offer. But then it could be extended. So that's, that was my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I can, Madam Mayor, can I propose that we accept those two sets of minutes?
Yeah, you may. And I'm happy to second them. Can we all vote on that?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. We've got councillor.
Can I just draw attention to, this is really lame compared to what everyone else has said, but there's a very small typo at the end of the 27th of January. It should read Fast Gate Foundation.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
If we could just change that, that would be, that would be ace.
Yes. We've been.
Sorry, I found that really pathetic contribution to the debate.
I quite agree with you. I did spot that earlier, actually. I should have changed it. No, that's.
As a dyslexic, anyone coming into a debate to correct spelling is more than welcome.
So we're all happy to agree with that. The minute accepted there. So now we are on to item 10. Again, councillor Barker, did you want to speak to this item? You're on mute.
Apologies.
Thank you.
You wouldn't think I'd spent all day doing, doing conferences by.
I was going to say, no.
Yeah. Apologies. Yeah, happy to, happy to get this all so refreshed. This came up at the last town council meeting. And I think the question was whether do we refresh or do we allow the municipal charities to carry on with Trevor Abrams' appointment? And we decided as a group that we need to take our responsibility seriously and, and reappoint. And then the second one was Mr Gates had somehow been appointed for, for half the role, but not the second half. But, but, but in reality, probably shouldn't have been reappointed again either, as it was a, a, a town council appointment to be, to be addressed. And I think we concluded collectively last time that that, you know, both, both Mr Abrams and, and Mr Gates, you know, have done a fantastic job in the community. Of course, many, many roles, including municipal charities that, obviously both previous councillors as well. But we, but we would like to, to take our responsibility seriously and appoint, appoint somebody. I think in the case of Mr Gates, the municipal charities have had to go back to the charities commission to, to investigate. And I don't think that's concluded yet from, from what I know. Town clerk, because we didn't have an update after last Friday, were we?
No, I haven't received any further updates.
So, so that, that appointment can't, can't be made yet. If indeed it can be at all. If the charities commission decide that it, you know, Mr Gates has to retain the role in, in one half of the municipal charities, it's likely he should be extended in the other. But we can, we can appoint somebody in, in place of Mr Abrams. And we have one candidate, I think, that's put their name forward. A guy called Stephen Fisher, who lives locally in, in Faversham. He is a, a managing director of Blackrock Investment Bank. And so knows a thing or two about investments, which obviously drives the funding cycle for, for a lot of the municipal charities. And, you know, I think he's, is keen to get involved in the community. I, I did note that when the municipal charities put forward the recommendation to extend Trevor Abrams, it was on the back of his commercial acumen. So I think Stephen Fisher more than, more than makes up for for that in that particular capacity. I think his, his CV went out with the invite for tonight's meeting. So you should all have a chance to read it. I'm happy to propose we accept Stephen Fisher's appointment on behalf of the council for that role, unless there are any other submissions or, or questions or thoughts.
Yeah.
Stand silence. Councillor Martin.
I'm happy to second that. When Stephen Fisher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we all vote on that?
Do we all vote? Yes. Yeah.
And I think councillor Jackson's voting as well. Councillor Saunders, just for the record.
I'll abstain. I'm sure he's a very decent person, but I don't.
One abstention and the rest.
Ah, yeah. Thank you.
I was struggling with my hair. So I'm sorry. I abstained as well.
Yes, thank you. So we now move on to item 11, receipts and payments. I think we've all got those. Are there any queries?
Just one, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
On the Excel spreadsheet, there are three payments listed for the net. All for a full page in issue 194. I think that means 194, 195 and 196, from what I can recall, but I just wanted to double check.
Town clerk, I think it's three months, isn't it?
Yes, it's been done as three months. So the payment's under £500 each time. It's just the way it's been allocated.
Thank you. Are we happy? Councillor Martin.
I'm happy to propose that we accept the payments.
I would second that. Can we all vote unless there's any queries? No, we're there. Thank you. Now. Item 11, is that the last item, Town Clerk? I don't seem to have another piece of paper. Or have I missed?
No, that should be.
Just saying. So that, that's it then for this evening. Well, thank you, everybody. And I think you're all doing an incredible job. And I think things are definitely feeling more positive. And we've just got to keep going along that road. Councillor Perkin.
Um, thank you. Sorry for a tiny bit of any other business. We, the Faversham's first disability forum is occurring on the 16th of March. And a number of stakeholders have said they're going to come. And I'm hoping that it's going to be a really successful event. So if anyone wanted to come and support that, I'd welcome their attendance. Thank you. Also, if you're working with any stakeholders or any members of the community that you think would be interested in joining the group, then it's for everyone. So let them know as well, please.
Yes. No, brilliant. Thank you. And just to finish by asking everyone to promote the lottery. I think Town Clerk, it's, it's definitely taking off. But of course, we've got no banners, no. So it is, you know, we, we all need to go out and promote the lottery, I think. And hope we can raise some funds for all our good causes that will be needing funds.
I saw, I saw a banner on the rec railings.
Oh, wow. They're out.
Yeah, I think it was only there today, was it? Recently.
Yeah, probably in the last couple of days. And, and I can report that in the first week. It's, it's raised over 13 and a half thousand so far.
Wow. Well. It, it's, it's good when we can tell people, I, I spoke to three or four people over the weekend and, you know, I said to them 60 pounds, 60 pence of the one pound will go into a good cause in Faversham. So your pound won't be wasted. And yeah, they, they were quite happy with that. So let's hope it continues to gather more for them. But thank you everyone for tonight. That's really good. Really great.
Thank you.
Good meeting. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.